Coming, well, we had an open session earlier, so this would be the open minute, or the open meeting. And first is public input, and seeing no one here, I'll go with there's not any input. And there is no student report today because the school is not open to the students. So, new business. There's the annual review of town-owned land. And I looked through it, and I didn't see that there was anything that spring up if anyone else had looked through it and thought maybe there was a good idea of some of it.
Yeah, the, this chairman, the only, I had sent an email to Mr. Bernard. The only, only part that I was wondering about is there's a, there's a small piece of land between Southwick and where the little school property begins. We were thinking about trying to do repaving and changing the parking. I just didn't know if, with any plans, if that piece of land would be useful at all. And I think Mr. Bernard was going to reach out to the town engineer just to see what that land was and if there'd be any use in that. That's the only, that's the only land that seemed adjacent to the, any school property, which I might think would be of interest to us.
So, Madam Chairman, Mr. Buckley did reach out to me earlier today and just alerted me to the fact that he, you know, thought that that might be something worth exploring, and I agree. So, I have written to the town engineer today and asked him if he could review the information with the map and then arrange for a time to speak with me about it. So, I will pursue that, and when I have an update, let you folks know.
Perfect.
Is it this one that's listed as parcel 57 Southwick Road? Is that it?
We're not sure, and I think I need the town engineer's help with identifying that because it's not identified on the map with a number.
It's definitely not that one because that's eighty-seven thousand square feet.
Yes.
That's two, two-plus acres.
And we believe it's a Barbary Road address.
Okay.
There is a Barbary Road listed on the, on the list, but...
Which is approximately the right size, or at least from, from the map you've printed, it might be the right size. It's hard to tell.
I don't know.
Okay. All right. October fifteen, two thousand eighteen, town meeting, the warrant articles.
Do you need a vote on that, other than that, or? Because there was a discussion and vote listed.
Yeah, but we can't vote until we find out, so...
Do they need for timeline? Do they need anything?
You, you will. So, if you, if you want to place in my hands the determination on whether or not the committee, if the committee would be, have interest in that one parcel, if it would serve the purpose that, we hope it would, which would be to provide additional parking, I can indicate that. Otherwise, I'll submit it with no interest.
That's fine with me, if you are all in agreeance.
I would think a vote would probably be a, you know, an appropriate step.
So, I would move to authorize Mr. Bernard to follow up on that one parcel and determine whether he thinks it might be useful, and otherwise say that we have no interest in any of the others.
I'll second, but before we do that, there's two Barbaries, so we don't know which one is which.
That's part of what he is going to...
That's what I need, the town engineer's...
Yeah, but it's two parcels, that's all I'm...
Correct. It may, and it may, this may be neither of them.
Maybe none of them.
Right.
And the parcel's actually divided on the map? It could be two different sides of the street, or one parcel, I don't know.
And it could be mislisted on the map as well, so we just...
Exactly.
All right. Having a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, now on to the town warrant articles. Are there any articles that we have that we would need to, upcoming or anything of that nature?
Not, not from our perspective.
Okay. Well, if we don't have any, there's...
I think you would only need to vote if there was something to be submitted.
Okay, the amendment to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school calendar. Mr. Bernard, would you like to?
I would, Madam Chairman, thank you. So, in conversation with the middle school principal, Mrs. O'Connell, she believes, and I, and I agree with her, and that we would like to amend the calendar for two thousand eighteen, nineteen by eliminating an early release day on Wednesday, January twenty-third, and consequently eliminate the evening parent-teacher conference night. So, it would be a full day of school for children on the twenty-third, and then the conferences would be held on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, one in the evening and one on the afternoon. Mrs. O'Connell, excuse me, Dr. O'Connell tells me that historically, the, the time needed is more than, than, is, is necessary for the conferencing, and I think, quite honestly, she'd rather have the students in school and, and, you know, more contact time with teachers.
All right. Do you want to discuss it first, or should we take a motion? Doesn't matter which way, right?
Nope.
Does anyone have any concerns or comments?
Nope.
All right, and I'll entertain a motion to amend the calendar year.
Second?
Make a motion.
Oh, make a motion to amend the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school calendar for the recommendations outlined by Mr. Bernard.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, appointment to the North Shore Community Consortium Board of Directors. In the past, it's always been our superintendent, and I don't see any reason to change it, and it's a one-year term. Any questions or comments?
I, if, if you could just explain what it is.
Give you an overview?
Yep.
Sure. So, and if you don't mind, I'll speak about both, the SEEM Collaborative, because they're similar. So, both of those schools are special, schools for students with disabilities, special needs, that we would, we would send a student to when the district could not accommodate that need. And so, we are part of a regional cohort. So, with the SEEM Collaborative, there's maybe ten districts, and the North Shore Consortium, I think it's twelve. We recently admitted IPSWITCH, so that may be going to thirteen. And essentially, the school, the superintendent represents, it's usually the superintendent from all of the districts. So, the superintendents make up a board that essentially functions like a school committee does, and the executive director of that collaborative functions much like the superintendent does. And so, we have monthly board meetings, and I go, and I represent North Reading's interests, and I bring back usually a quarterly report to this committee on the actions of the, of those various collaboratives. I bring the budget, once it's adopted, both, both back to the school committee, so you see. And I usually highlight for you, when that budget is adopted, what the benefits are by North Reading being a member community at each of those collaboratives, and it is a, a significant financial savings by us being a member. So, as Mrs. Imbriano said, traditionally, the superintendent is appointed, appointed. I get appointed annually. They are one-year terms by law, and I think, I think it's fair to say that our participation on both of those collaboratives as a district is important, because otherwise, you know, we might be challenged with a much more restrictive placement for students if they weren't able to be serviced either here or at a collaborative placement.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I could have a motion to nominate Superintendent Bernard to the North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors.
Move to appoint Superintendent Bernard to be representative on the North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And again, he, for, I'll entertain a motion to recommend Superintendent Bernard to the SEEM Collaborative Board of Directors, which is also a one-year term.
I move to appoint Superintendent Bernard to the SEEM Collaborative Board of Directors.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are whipping through this. Under routine matters, minutes for the June fourth open session town meeting.
Okay, so, on page one, at the bottom, for the LD Batch Elder School Explorer Vision Team, we have, a parent's name is Russo, and for the kid, we have Rusan. Alberto Rusan and Al Russo, so I don't know which name is correct there.
So, you're actually skipping the eleventh one?
Eleven, one, or the fourth first?
Okay. Well, we got to do the fourth first. I move to approve the June fourth minutes of the North Reading School Committee.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
So, on the eleventh down the bottom, we have Russo and Rusan for the two names. I don't know which one is right.
I might be able to look quickly. I think it's Russo.
That's my guess, too.
Yeah, that was my recollection, but I might be having it from Mr. Colleen.
And then on the second page, for the contract, the vote was actually five oh because Mike Gilberto voted. I think that has to be noted in the minutes, that this town administrator, Mike Gilberto, was part of the vote. I don't think Rich was here, right?
No, he was not here.
Okay.
That's right.
So, it would have been, it would have been five oh, and I think in parentheses, parentheses, you should say, including vote of town administrator, Michael Gilberto.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think that's it. Yeah, that was the only two things I found.
Should you note the visitors, like, the, the teachers that were retiring there as well, or not?
The what?
We were honoring the, some of the teachers that were retiring that night? I'm just question, I'm just wondering, should they be noted as visitors as well?
I don't know. The visitors thing has always interested me. I always wonder why that's on the agenda in the first place, because you could have thirty people in here, and they're not all going to be on there.
Yeah, that's right. It's usually who you can identify or who speaks, I think.
Yeah.
Does that have to be part of the minutes? Is that a requirement? It's been on forever, but...
Always, yeah, it's always been there, yeah. I'm not saying that's right, I'm just saying, I don't know.
I don't know.
I would think maybe if someone were speaking and identifies, gives their name and address type of thing, maybe?
Yeah, if you were on, if you were on the agenda to present something, I would think you'd be a visitor, but I...
And I think that's typically what you do, Sidney, am I right?
Yeah, if you're speaking.
Yeah.
I do your name.
But if you're, but if you're, if they're there so you can...
Recognize them.
Recognize them, I wouldn't think you'd be considered a visitor.
I'm just questioning one...
Yeah, I don't, doesn't matter.
And by the way, it is Russo.
It is received.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And you got the other change, too, on the contract?
On the contract.
Okay. So, I move to accept the open minutes for June eleventh, two thousand eighteen, as amended.
Second?
One, one comment, then if we're gonna, if we're gonna be consistent and visitors, is that the one that Mr. Gilberto spoke at, though? So, he should be, Mr., is that the one Mr. Gilberto was at?
He spoke.
So, he should be listed as a visitor, since he spoke?
Yeah.
And he made a statement?
Yes, he did come in.
Yeah, it seems like that.
He made a comment on the contract.
And he voted, I mean, it was, there is a...
So, you abstained?
I was, I was absent.
Yes.
So, I guess that means...
So, we didn't have a vote on this, right?
No, we have not.
No. We didn't have a vote, we had a vote on the fourth, but not the eleventh.
Right.
So, he made the motion, Scott seconded, and then...
No, Rich seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you made a comment.
I made a comment, we had to vote no.
Rich really, probably shouldn't be seconded. Oh, Rich was here, no, he wasn't here.
I'll second.
Right.
I didn't second, yeah.
Yeah. He, he didn't second it.
The eleventh.
Scott seconded the eleventh, yes.
There we go.
There we go.
With, as amended.
All right.
Is there any other comments or corrections?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, it's four oh one. And Rich changed on that one?
Oh, right, yes.
Yeah.
I said aye, but...
You did abstain? All right, you, I mean, you can vote on them.
If he wasn't there...
He can vote, but it's normal...
To abstain.
Procedure is abstain, yeah.
Yeah, I'm certainly unconcerned either way.
Okay. So, we'll call it four with one abstention?
If we were contentious, then I would...
Okay.
Think about it more.
Right.
It not being contentious.
All right, the budget update, Mr. Conley.
Yes, so, as Mr. Bernard passed out at the beginning of the meeting, I know this wasn't in your packet, so you're probably just looking at it for the first time as I speak, speak to it, but we did complete the closeout of fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Just these past couple of days, we actually put the final touches on fiscal two thousand eighteen as early as yesterday afternoon. So, what I have in front of you is the final two thousand eighteen budget report, which reflects final expenditures and carryforward encumbrances for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. And I'm happy to report that we, I do believe we had a smooth and successful closeout of fiscal year two thousand eighteen. You know, as projected, we did have some available surplus funds in various salary accounts, insurance, and some utility accounts that allowed us to prepay special education tuitions. We were able to meet and even exceed the amount forecasted during the budget process of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this area, which, again, will help provide some additional level of flexibility as we head into fiscal year two thousand nineteen. We also were able to meet other available funds that we forecasted during the FY nineteen budget process to help pay June regular transportation, even athletic transportation costs from the general fund, which, again, all of these, these adjustments helped us, enabled us to meet our carryover targets in these revolving funds to help match fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget offsets. We have talked about the food service program each month at the monthly budget updates, and I'm happy to report that I met with the officials from Chart Wells and the Food Service Director, Anna McGovern, over the past couple of weeks, and we did reconcile our federal estate reimbursement revenue and final receipts for the program, catering receipts, and completed our, our balance sheet and final P and L statement. And I'm very pleased to report that the program did finish off with a net profit of two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. So, I do believe this is the first, you know, break-even, you know, self-supportive year, ending the year in the black by the amount of twenty-nine hundred and thirty-four dollars in at least a decade, if not more. So, it's, it's certainly something that was a goal this year that we had. We've been working towards it for the, the high level of focus over the last five years, and we came very close last year, and I'm happy to report that we kind of got over that hump this year through a lot of effort by many people, certainly including the Food Service Director, Anna McGovern, and the staff continued to do an exceptional job this year. And I'm just very pleased to see the account, you know, finished the way it did. You know, average daily male participation was up by eight point two percent across the district. Adult sales were also up by a total of seven and a half percent this school year. To me, that is an indication that efforts like the addition of the salad bar at the high school, for example, has been successful and has yielded some, some good results.
Michael, quick question.
Yeah.
Eight point two percent. What is the participation rate? Is it half the people, three-quarters, a third? I mean, do we have any idea of...
Yeah, our, our overall participation rate for a district this size with our free-reduced lunch population is sitting just at about, just under like forty percent.
Under forty percent.
Yeah, about, right around forty percent, which is pretty, pretty, pretty good for a district our size. So, adult sales are up seven and a half percent. You know, meals sold to free-reduced lunch students was also up by a total of fifteen point seven percent. So, that was an initiative on area of focus over the last few years. We did receive our comprehensive review by the DESE a few years ago, and this was an area that they highlighted, that they felt we should focus on and maybe work to do a little bit better, to just, what that's an indication of is that those students that are eligible for free-reduced lunch are assessing the program, and we want them to assess the program and receive that benefit. And that also helps us receive additional federal and state reimbursement dollars from, from the state. So, that, that's a good trend. I'm happy to see that that is trending in the upwards direction. So, overall, I think there's a lot of highlights by the program. I think it's certainly on the right track. At the same time, I do remain optimistic that the program can continue to improve. So, I met with, with Anna McGovern and Chris Callahan, our, our Chart Wells team, and I think we, we talked about, you know, things we can continue to look at, to try to, you know, keep the program not only break-even or, or better. For instance, exploring adding a breakfast program at the elementary level, that continues to be something we're, we're looking at very seriously, and we hope to potentially do that as early as the fall with maybe try, trying a program at the Batch Elder School, which is just the largest school with more students in the before-school program as a trial, and with the hope that if there's success there, that could expand to all, all the schools. So, it's, it's something that we're, we're exploring. We're certainly always exploring ways to increase catering sales and so forth, and I'll remind the committee that we did receive that, that grant that funded a mobile breakfast cart, which we did receive already, and it's been, it's been put together. We're just waiting for a couple of small parts to come in, but we hope to roll that out at the high school, you know, middle school level.
Literally.
Literally roll it out.
Roll it out.
Exactly, exactly. But we're, we're hopeful that may also increase some sales and some flexibility and some...
Lot that we all got.
Allow us to, to access some additional students at the high school level. So, again, a lot of highlights, but they're certainly pleased with the performance of the food service program. Continue along with the report, again, on the payroll side, really nothing significant to report, as has been the case all year. I'm happy to, to, to say that, you know, there's certainly been some turnover and attrition, this fund's reflective, available in the teacher and custodial line items, but, you know, overall, final payroll expenses are very close to our budgeted line items. So, despite some challenging, you know, a challenging winter with some, with some, you know, cold and severe weather and some unexpected costs, maintenance costs and so forth, I think due to our conservative, you know, spending approach and the way we were able to manage the budget throughout the year, we were able to achieve the year-end carryover funds we had planned on during the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget process. And I think overall, I'm certainly pleased with how fiscal year two thousand eighteen closed out, and I do think, you know, although things are tight, as we know, they were during, those folks that certainly were heavily involved in the planning and development of fiscal year two thousand nineteen, I, I do think we're in, you know, solid financial standing. As we start fiscal year two thousand nineteen, as you can see by the report, you know, we essentially almost spent, you know, down to the dollar of what we had available in the general fund for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. So, I'm happy to take any questions. The typical format was included, it also included the kind of the town meeting template that breaks down salaries and expenses in the major functional categories for your information as well. Then I'll take any questions.
I was going to ask the, the food cart, but you already mentioned that, so, we're all good. Great job, by the way. Thank you for all your hard work. Mr. Bernard?
Following up on what you just said, Madam Chairman, I just, Michael acknowledged the efforts of Anna McGovern and the food service workers in helping to bring about, I think for the first time, certainly in a long time, maybe the first time ever, zero deficit with the food services account, but Michael did not acknowledge his own efforts, and I can tell you, I have firsthand knowledge of his very intimate involvement in working with people to, to achieve that. It is a significant achievement, and it really is something that is, is worthy of kind of public commendation, as well as the closeout of fiscal year two thousand eighteen. That is, Michael's department and he himself worked very hard to close out the budget in a timely fashion, and they do that with great skills. So, I want to publicly commend Michael and his staff for, for their efforts, both in food services and in the business department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. In terms of the food service program, how do you account for, you know, dropping enrollments going forward? Will that, will that impact revenues? Will, should it also impact costs? I mean, I just...
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, we are looking at a slight decline overall throughout the district in the coming years, with the largest decline being at the high school level.
Right.
So, it, it should have a, we don't think it'll have a significant impact on revenue. I think, you're right, I think with maybe a, a loss a little bit on the revenue side because of the decline, I think you'd also, you'll, you'll pick up some on the product costs and so forth, but, so we don't, it's not part of our, we're not anticipating that it will be a large, you know, hurdle to overcome.
And the good news is getting to a profit, we don't even have to think about raising lunch prices at this time, correct?
Right.
Excellent.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you again, Michael.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is staffing.
No, he's, Michael has more, right? Does he have the, the rest of the budget stuff?
The quarterly?
The quarterly.
Oh, sorry.
The in-kind contributions?
Yeah, so those are part of the gifts and donations.
Yes.
Oh, you're going to do it by gifts and donations?
Yeah. So, are we on, there's no staffing, right? So, we're on...
I, I had identified, I had identified this as part of the budget update, but it can be...
Yeah, it was on the budget update.
You're just going to accept those gifts. You can do it when you do the gifts.
Okay.
Yeah, so what, what I actually will do, so what's, including in your packet is under bids and donations, or the, an update on the budget, was the final, you know, the final quarter of the year, your parent donations that, that we did receive, and again, it's just a significant, you can see by this quarter, March through June, we already accepted September through November, then, you know, December through February at, at prior meetings, but it's, we continue to receive a, a large amount of in-kind contributions through the PTO budgets, and tonight's meeting reflects the, the final quarter that we asked for your acceptance. And then what I do plan on doing, because we did put the final touches on it recently, and in the August meeting, I will present the, the final list of both monetary and in-kind donations for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, which will include all of these that are on the list tonight, as well as all, all the donations you've accepted throughout the fiscal year, and we, we are north of two hundred thousand dollars again in the total list, which is just exceptional.
So, you, you can do these now if you'd like, or you can do them with the other gifts? It's totally up to you.
I actually only received one from the...
You should have a packet of four, and then the late one, which was the Hood School that I gave you tonight.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, we received the Hood School one a little bit later.
There we go. Yeah.
Do those now?
Yes.
Sure.
We'll do that. All right, so...
So, there should be a stapled set of four.
Yep, and then there's this new one.
The one single dated July fifteenth.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to accept...
Yeah.
The bids and donations packets, if someone wants to be so gracious as to read them all.
I'll go through them, sure.
Okay.
One, one, five times, right?
Well, there's actually three more.
Four, four and one, right?
There's seven.
For this.
And there's three more under...
Correct. Under bids and donations.
There's three more under gifts and donations. That starts with the Batch Parents Association.
Oh, the one dated June twenty-nine?
Yes.
Yeah.
You got like nine of them.
That's fine.
Take a deep breath.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one hundred dollars from the Batch Elder Parents Association to offset the transportation costs from the third-grade field trip to Concord Museum.
Second?
Having the motion, any questions or comments? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chairwoman, I move to accept, that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of nine hundred dollars from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association to offset field trip costs for grades one, three, and four at the J. Turner Hood Elementary School.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $1,500 from the Batch Elder Elementary School to support the cost, from the Parents Association to support the cost of a new bench and iPads at the Batch Elder Elementary School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Going to the July 10 pages. Madam Chairwoman, I move that the committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for totaling $10,072.22 for teacher supply reimbursements, enrichment activities, class field trip expenses from the LD, Batch Elder Elementary School Parents Organization.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for teacher supply reimbursements, enrichment activities, general school supplies, and other miscellaneous items totaling $14,447.62 from the E. Ethel Little School Elementary School Parents Association.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that this committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for enrichment activities, teacher appreciation breakfasts and luncheons, eighth grade legacy day activities totaling $6,541.57 from the North Reading Middle School Parents Association.
Second.
Pardon my hesitation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chairwoman, I move to, that the committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for enrichment activities involving presentations and speakers from the North Reading High School Parents Association totaling $3,250.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And lastly, Madam Chairwoman, I move that the committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations including teacher supply reimbursements, field day expenses, enrichment activities, and teacher appreciation, appreciation activities totaling $7,744.62 from the J. Turner Hood Elementary School Parents Association.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This town is very, very generous.
They are extremely generous. I like that it's a long list.
Agreed.
Okay, now to Mr. Bernard for staffing.
Madam Chairman, thank you. So in your packet, you have an updated staffing report with highlights of staff hired since my last presentation to you on June 25th. Hired at the Batch Elder School is a special education teacher is Benjamin Purshouse. As a school adjustment counselor, actually, we've changed the position to a school psychologist, excuse me, is Christina Petry at the Batch Elder School. The, at the little school, Emily Barrett is a grade one teacher. She will be replacing Mrs. Levitt, who has, very much happy for her, advanced her career. She's been appointed a principal at, at the Barrows Elementary School in Reading. So congratulations to Mrs. Levitt, who has had a wonderful, wonderful career. I know she's sad to leave North Reading, but I share in her, her happiness for her new position and thank her for her service to North Reading. Allison Powers has been hired as an integrated pre-kindergarten teacher, also at the little school, and a new special education teacher at the high school, Miss Madeline Lund. We do have a number of positions that are still vacant in the summer months. We are active, I have a person that's coming in for an interview, final interview with me on Monday. But we, we are closing very rapidly on our, our hiring, and I expect a full complement of staff for the opening of schools. So I'll give you an additional update on, on August 27th at your next meeting.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I could ask a question, I know we have two head coach positions open, the girls lacrosse and football coach. Can you give us any kind of update on those?
I can. I can give you an update on the, on the, on the football particularly. I think the lacrosse will be, you know, because we have more time.
Good time, right, right.
Yeah, the football, so we had 14 applicants, five were called, that list was called down to five semifinalists that were interviewed yesterday.
Okay.
My understanding is that there are two, possibly three. In fact, I think it's more likely that there will be three second interviews held tomorrow. So I think it's going to be three, two or three, more likely three of those five that were interviewed yesterday are coming in for a second interview tomorrow.
Then hopefully an offer made early next week.
Assuming that those interviews go well, and if there's a need for reference checks beyond what we've already done, then I would, I would think next week is a, is a reasonable timeframe for announcement of, offering that position and announcement of who that position will be, so.
Is it a requirement for coaching that you work in the district?
No.
No? Okay.
Most of our head coaches do, most of our coaching staff, but not all. Yeah. And it is not a requirement.
Is there a preference given to in district or not? Doesn't matter.
You asking me personally what I think?
I don't know what the guidelines are. I'm not sure.
I think there's, in my opinion, there, there can be advantages to a person that works in the district as a teacher because they know students and they're available to students and families in a different way. They're able to monitor academics and work with students, you know, than if they were out of town in another profession or whatever. But I don't know that there's necessarily a preference given, but I think if you look at it as all things being equal, I think there sometimes is a benefit that, you know, we do acknowledge.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Sure.
And those are the only two positions we have open, right? There's no, all the other head coaches.
There is an assistant.
Assistant, right, but.
Soccer, girls soccer.
Right, but in volleyball, was there, do we have JV volleyball coach too?
Assistant, yes, correct.
Assistant, right, yeah.
Head coach.
And those are both fall sports also.
Correct.
Okay.
The football one was, you know, it was a late announcement of Coach Wall's resignation, and, and the athletic director, Dave Johnson, the high school principal got on that. They formed a committee. We did include students and, a student and a parent, as well as Sean Colleen as a head coach.
For the interviews?
One of the assistant coaches of the football program, Chuck Campabasso. Yeah, Matt Selecky, you might know Matt Selecky, a student. Chuck Karucci Jr. was a parent representative. Assistant principal, Mike Downs. So it was, you know, and they, and they got, they got on it right away. They selected the semifinalists on Monday, interviewed yesterday, and the second interview's tomorrow. So I think we've, we've moved pretty aggressively on that with the understanding that, you know, double sessions are just around.
It's going to be almost an immediate, immediate start.
Pretty quick.
If someone accepts, it'd be almost.
Yeah.
Immediate, yeah.
So I think, I, I'm optimistic we'll be in a good place sometime in the next week.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, on to subcommittee updates. And there should just be the one, because I don't believe anyone else has gotten together since the last time. So, Rich or Diane?
Yeah, sure. We, we started to go through the policies. We, starting it from the very beginning and doing a review. But we are, we are hoping to bring some to the committee shortly that will be revised. A lot of updates came from town meeting, things such as the name of the.
Oh, right.
Selectmen, and some of the updates came from the recent MASC bulletin around protected classes. So really simplistic things thus far, and we're looking to, our next meeting is in September to continue.
I think, I think so far we only came up with one where we think is, requires a vote. The others are just going to be revisions because of those sort of mechanical changes.
I know that the Mass Association of School Committees sent out a letter recently, and the blue one had a couple of policy things on it.
That's what we have.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so that's one of the ones that you wanted.
Correct.
Okay.
The only other one I would ask about is, in our meeting at 4:30, I noticed the handheld device.
Policy mentioned again?
The guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, and I know we talked, when we, when I was on it last year, we talked about whether or not there needs to be policy on handheld devices and for use of the new computers, the one-to-one devices, and so.
Yeah, that's something that probably needs some attention.
We backburnered it. I think somebody, I think.
Dan Downs.
Dan Downs was working on it, and so that's the only thing that, like, when we did it last year, that's one thing we never got to, but passing to you.
The other thing too, I guess, now that you mention that, is there was roughly, what, 99?
I think we talked, I think it was 99, yeah.
That need to be ousted just because they're no longer whatever.
No, I think 99 was the one that needed to be revised, and there was another group.
Right.
Right.
That they were recommending. I think we talked a little bit.
So are you, as you go through?
The other day about some that may need to be.
Are you just kind of beat it out?
We didn't encounter any the other day in section A.
Yeah, I think, I think when you looked at, when we looked at section A, we saw a lot of things where we questioned why we had to have a policy there. For instance, they seemed to be stating things that were more in the overview of, of the town charter, or, but, but we did not change, we did, decided to sort of leave those be. Certainly, that kind of major restructuring, I think, would be a bigger effort, not an unworthy one, but something we probably need to think about a little more before we sort of dive into it.
Very good. Isn't it fun?
We had a good meeting.
It was a good meeting.
It was a good meeting, yeah.
It was, it was, you know, it's, it's a necessary and sometimes fruitful exercise.
Yeah.
All right, upcoming subcommittee schedule, the Substance Abuse Coalition, July 24th at 10:00 AM, not 11:00, at the police station. Note to self. And NOR Cam.
11:00?
Oh, yeah. Anyway, the North Cam Board of Directors meeting is September 27th at 7:00 PM at the North Cam office. And that's it for the subcommittee.
Did we not set a athletic subcommittee for August?
We didn't. We said, no.
We said no for July, but we didn't set one for August either.
No, we didn't set the date that I had. I could be, if you have it there, please let me know.
No, I don't. I thought.
I didn't think we had. I thought it was going to be at the call of.
Because we're going to have to have one in August, I would think.
We'll have one in August, yeah.
Okay.
All right, on to the administrative reports. Mr. Bernard?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So in my report, I had a couple of things for all of you and for the community. The first is, I, I wanted to call out for you some important dates coming up. On August 7th, the Community Impact Team's sponsored National Night Out, an annual event, I think this is the fifth annual, will be held on August 7th at 5:30 at Switch river Park with a rain date of August 14th. On August 28th at noon is the New Educator Luncheon, so that will be the first of two days of orientation for our new staff. And you are all welcome to join the group and the administration for lunch. You're not, I don't want you to feel obligated to be there, but you're certainly welcome to be there. On occasion, I think every year, at least one member, Mr. Webster's pretty faithful in attending, but others have, have joined him on occasion. But certainly, we'd love to have you if your schedule allows. And on September 4th is, is the opening day meeting with staff. That's the district-wide staff. That meeting will again be, begin at 12 o'clock in the Performing Arts Center here at the middle high school. The committee traditionally is in, is in full force at that meeting, and the chairman makes a brief address to the faculty. So just wanted you to have that for your calendar. I attached for you, and I have the actual magazine here if you want to see it, but I, I thought it was nice to call out for our Director of Digital Learning, Dan Downs. He was recently published with an article in this magazine called Empowered Learner. And Dan's article was entitled, Partner to Amplify Advocacy at the Highest Levels. I just thought it was nice to see him having been published in a magazine around digital learning initiatives across the country. And I think you all have, have been witness to Dan's presentations before you, his work with the Digital Learning and Technology Plan, most recently, I think in the January presentation before you. He's doing some nice work, and I thought I wanted to call his, your attention to, to his recently having been published. My annual presentation to you of the students, high school students' performance on the advanced placement exams is included in the packet. I think it's likely there may be an article in the transcript next week. I know Mr. LaPret met with Maureen Doherty this past Monday, which is typically what a high school principal does. Once again, our, you know, I think the callouts for, for the committee and the public regarding our students' advanced placement performance, you know, first and foremost, I would lead with the number of students that we have taking advanced placement courses and the advanced placement tests that are administered. This year, we approached almost 500 exams. You see it on the chart that I've attached with you, 492 exams. I always like to remind folks that when I started as the high school principal in 2003, there were 87 exams administered. So we're, you know, kind of approaching that five times as many exams. We do have an open enrollment policy. I think everyone is aware of that. So there is always a bit of a, you know, I think a conversation around, you know, is that or is that not a good thing? We believe that it is, and this year, our, our students in the 2018 test administration tied the class of 2016 performance report with 71% of students receiving a qualifying score, which is a three, four, or a five. Some, some ideas that I think are worthy of mentioning to you is that the United States Government and Politics course had a 28% increase in its qualifying score. That certainly is something to be particularly proud of. Similarly, in statistics, there was a 20%, 21% increase in the qualifying scores. We continue to have chemistry and physics as focus areas for us, that those exams have traditionally not been our highest performing exams. We are, I, I can tell you that we, the St. John'sbury College runs a workshop every summer for teachers of, of the advanced placement exam, and our chemistry teacher is attending this summer as a means of kind of just further preparing for the course to be taught in the fall. But it's, it remains in an area where we, we think we should be doing better, and, and we will be supporting teachers and students to do that. But overall, I think the news is very good. I'm very proud of the teachers who, who work very hard. The advanced placement courses are not easy courses to take. They're not easy courses to teach. They require an awful lot. They're college-level courses. But I still believe today that our open enrollment policy, as long as a student has met a prerequisite course, is the right way to go. And I think the benefits to that are, are, are that our students do better across the board on, on standardized tests such as the SAT. They, I find they're better prepared for college. Our students', you know, success rate in freshman year of college is pretty high. Our guidance counselors do run an alumni survey, and we, we get good feedback on that. So I think it's important to highlight how our students are doing, no matter what the news. But right now, for this year, it is, in my opinion, very good news.
Just a question.
Sure.
Do you have any idea, maybe this is just near and dear to my heart since I taught these two subjects back in the day, but do you have any idea why, why the chemistry and physics are so low?
You know, I don't. You know, it's traditionally been a difficult exam for our kids.
Yeah.
You know, I, I wish I had a better answer for you. I mean, we do the professional development. We, we also participate. Linfield High School happens to be a site for the Salem State Collaborative, and they do voluntary practice exams. And they host them there for almost all of the exams that we administer, but not all. And when they don't, we have, our own teachers run a practice exam usually on a Saturday for students to just give them a familiarity of the exam. We do participate in, in, in all of the ones that are available. We have just, you know, the exam for physics changed about three years ago, maybe four, but it's just, it has not, I, I don't have a good answer for you. I don't think it's for a lack of anything that we're not trying to do better. I just, I don't know that we've ever been good at trying to identify where is the gap and what, what could be done differently. I do remember a few years ago when I was the high school principal, I, I had the teachers collaborating with neighboring districts where performance was better. Try to learn, like, what are some strategies? I think, you know, I think, I was hopeful at the time that that would bear more than it has. But I guess what I can tell you is it continues to be a focus area for us.
Yeah, because just, I quickly called up the national scores here. We're far, far below.
In those two.
In those two, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I thought maybe it was, you know, like with.
Like an anomaly.
MCAS, MCAS science in the middle school, how it's always, but everybody across the state is low.
Yeah.
But no, it's not the case, which is interesting.
It is.
Is there certain prerequisites that you need to, or criteria you need to meet to take those two classes? I know that we're more open with people taking.
Yes.
I think that might be part of it. And those harder, more difficult courses, the prerequisites, I bet, I think are more.
Are more stringent.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
They are.
One place where our.
As well.
Our open enrollment policy is.
It makes the score ever so lower, right.
That's, it probably is a factor, you know, but I just don't have any data. I can say to you that it definitely is a factor.
And you don't, and that's not a factor you can act on, so.
Right.
Correct.
Might as well just set it aside, but it is, is, you know, certainly a possibility.
Because the other one where you think maybe would be the same would be, and you look at the calculus, AB, eight out of 23. Again, prerequisite's a little more stringent.
Exactly.
You know, so.
Right. And it's interesting too, because science and, and you may all be aware, but I think certainly those of you who've been around for a while, you know, our science program is our most robust academic program in the school. I mean, it's, we require four years of science, but I can, I know many students are taking six, seven science courses over the course of their four-year career here. The, you know, biology, I think we had about, what, more than double the number of tests given from over 2017, you know?
Eighty-five kids.
Yeah, it's just interesting, you know, so it's not, it's, the sciences are very popular and attractive here, and students enroll far beyond what they're required to take. But, you know, we just have not been able to move the mark on those two.
Got to get that economics class going.
Yeah.
That runs, that runs sometimes and not, yeah.
Well, I was, I was noticing, at least according to the test numbers, it's been a while.
It has.
Yeah.
What's not on the chart too is we did have one student take a, take an exam in Japanese and scored a five, scored a five.
Wow.
Which is the highest score you can get.
That's pretty impressive.
Statistics is, yeah, it is.
It's tough.
I mean, there's, there's been some nice improvement in some, like US government.
US government had a big increase this year.
Yeah. US government jumped up quite a bit.
US government had its highest recorded average since 2005, I believe. It was a 28% increase in the qualifying score.
Calculus, calculus took a pretty big dip, and obviously, the chemistry and physics just stands out as concerning.
One of the things that happens every year too, and I get a couple of calls on this every year, is the results come out, the Globe or somebody publishes them, and we're never in the top in terms of scores, percentage with, with three or above because we have an open enrollment.
But 71% with an.
Seventy-one's pretty good, yeah.
I mean, that's a good number.
That is. For open enrollment, that's really good.
We may be back on the AP honor roll this year too, which would be four of the last six years. That could be, that, that, we may get on that with this.
Right.
With that 71%, which would be a nice boom too.
Yep.
I'm going to break a little bit. My daughter got a four in psychology, so she's jumping into the next one.
That's great.
I can tell you. I have them.
You might have to, because, you know, getting it from.
They're on my desk.
Is harder. You may have told me, I don't know.
And then the last thing I have, Madam Chairman, I just wanted to follow up with, with you. I think it had been brought up at the last meeting or two meetings ago, I'm not sure. But I did have a meeting with Rob Carbone. Hi, Rob, up in the back of the house. Right after school got out, I think it might have been like June 29th or so, or somewhere in that area, 28th or 29th. Rob and I had a good meeting. We continue to work with each other, and also Phil Healy from NOR Cam. We're, we're looking to schedule a series of, I'll call them informational workshops for students and any interested community members to learn more about the use of the video equipment with the goal of maybe having more school-based, I'll say school-based, but maybe community-based activities recorded and broadcast using NOR Cam, you know, through the local cable. So whether it's athletic events, dramatic performances, art show, you know, I think, I don't want to speak for Rob, but I think we're, we're pretty open to just about anything that, you know, would have relevance and, and interest in the community. So we're looking to do the first, the idea is to kind of do three sets of meetings throughout the year, with the first being late summer before the start of the school year. So if there are people that are interested, they can learn familiarity with the use of the cameras and, and then be available for the start of the. the start of the school year.
It's a good idea.
You know, our, our video production program at the, at the middle school and the high school is now, you know, we've seen it kind of, you know, you've seen some of the presentations when staff have come in for the meetings that are held with the schools, and, you know, I think we're at a place now where we're seeing more and more students being, you know, number one, skilled at the use of the equipment and, and their interest in using it increasing. So we, we're gonna try to capitalize on that and see if we might be able to do some more showcasing of things that are going on through the use of NOR Cam. So I want to thank Rob and, and Phil for bringing Mr. Buckley into the fold at a recent NOR Cam meeting, where he is the board's, the committee's representative to the board, and, you know, Rob and I have known each other a long time, and, you know, I think we've always had a good working relationship. This is just another thing we're gonna try to tackle and see if we might be able to make some positive movement with, so.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, it's, it's hard to work with Mr. Carboni at times.